And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This meeting is being livestreamed by Chelmsford Telemedia and posted to CPS website for interested community members to access and watch. In-person public participation will be taking place tonight in accordance with the Chelmsford School Committee Public Participation Policy. Anyone speaking tonight during our public input portion of this meeting is notified the superintendent's office of the desire to speak and has been provided with these guidelines. Upon request, written comments received no later than 12:00 PM on the day of this meeting will also be read and made part of the record of the meeting during the second public comment session. Welcome to this meeting of the Chelmsford School Committee. Our first order of business is to approve our minutes from our meeting on May 20th.
I move that we approve the minutes of the regular school committee meeting of May 20, 2025.
Uh, second.
Okay, any corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Alright, next up, our student representative.
Alright, so first off, I want to say congratulations to Richie Frazier for winning the student, um, student representative to the school committee. He'll be joining us next year. And on Sunday, the class of 2027 reps held the Spikeball Tournament. So congratulations to Sam Oaks and Marco Lombardo for winning. And for the seniors, tomorrow they have their prom. And closing it up on Saturday, they have their graduation. And finally, oh, I think one of my, uh, tomorrow is, uh, MCAS for all freshmen and sophomores taking biology.
Hmm.
What was the, uh, new rep's name?
Richie Frazier, Lana's brother, actually.
Oh, alright, okay, yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
He's a sophomore, so he's my friend, yeah.
Well, thank you. And thank you for everything this year. I mean, I'm sure we won't see you again for the summer, but, uh, enjoy your summer and, or seeing you back here in this.
Yours too. It was really fun having this position, yeah.
Gonna make him come on the last day of school.
No, I'm not.
The people just been saying. All your friends are gonna go out, we're gonna be like, no. You have an obligation, young man.
This is great.
Alright, anybody have any other good news to share?
I got a couple of pieces of good news. So last Friday, we had our unified, um, sports night day. I forget what we actually called it. Um, it was great. It was over at McCarthy Middle School. Lots of activities. Weather held out, which was A-OK. Kids had a blast. Lots of, um, faculty and just student helpers. It's just a nice, nice program that Katie Sims and all of her people put together and just do an amazing job. Um, other piece of good news is that, um, our own Sarah Costello, who's a first grade teacher at South Row, is a finalist for Teacher of the Year for 2026. So that's exciting. So, pretty good news.
Alright, anybody else have any good news this year?
Just congratulations to Katie Sims and to that whole team for doing all that work. That's terrific.
I'll just add in, um, today's good news, um, is we were able to finally get the opportunity to dedicate the new tennis courts to L. Thomas. So it was a nice little ceremony and, uh, good to see them doing well, so, yeah. Alright, uh, we don't have any public speakers, so we'll move on to new business.
We are gonna jump right in tonight because we actually have a couple of, um, presentations. The first one up is science, and we're expecting a lot out of this presentation.
Yes.
This is real science. Uh, this is, uh, John Morris, our science coordinator.
Save the best for last, science, yeah.
Thank you, yes. Uh, he's gonna talk a little bit about what's happening, uh, K-12 science in the district. Welcome, John.
Thank you for having me. Uh, first off, I did a little bit of good news. Patrick, good luck Thursday. Congratulations. You guys going on to, uh, Final Four. Very exciting news. Pumped for ya, so. Uh, so yes, thank you so much for having me. Uh, this is my first time, uh, being back, uh, in a little bit to talk specifically about what's happening with our science curriculum here in the district. Uh, so basically tonight, I'm gonna talk about three main areas. Uh, the first one is just a general curriculum overview of what it looks like K-12. Uh, you know, what are the kids' daily experiences as they prepare themselves to get into Chelmsford High School and beyond. The second area, which is pretty exciting, are some recent improvement projects that we've had, uh, specifically at McCarthy and at the high school. But I want to talk about how that has actually had a direct academic impact in a positive way, uh, for our kids and for our staff. Last but not least, it would not be talking about science MCAS without talking about how it's changing again. Uh, it's kinda like our New England weather, but here it comes. Uh, so some updates on that that I'll be giving you. Uh, I will say they are positive changes. These are pretty exciting things that we're gonna see specifically for our grade five and grade eight students, uh, in a couple of years. So first and foremost, our curriculum, let's look at elementary school. So, uh, since I've been, uh, here in 2017, we've had the FOS, uh, science curriculum, so Next Generation Science System. Uh, one big update that's happened over the last four or five years is the integration of what they call the ThinkLink platform. This is an online platform. It links right in through Clever for all of our students and all of our staff. Uh, the entire teacher's edition is online. Assessments can be available online. Student videos, student resources, teacher resources, all as a hub is right there, and it's direct access for our students and our staff. Uh, this has been an evolving platform. They do tend to add things each year. They even have Massachusetts-specific information on it. But one of the things that does happen in elementary school, we only have so much time in terms of what we have academically. So, I've been fortunate enough to work with the social science coordinator, Steph Quinn. So we actually came up with a plan a few years ago of how can we make sure that our kids are getting enough science, but also enough social science? And we actually worked out a way where we alternate each trimester. So we'll have social science to kick off first trimester, then we switch over to science. And then we repeat that the second and third trimester. This way, we give equal amount of time on learning between the two subject areas. Uh, and we had a lot of positive feedback from staff when we made those changes, and our Ecos and Pace and Guide reflected those. Uh, but also up here, if we look at K-4, uh, this is just an image of what the units are titled, what they look like as kids go through elementary school. So the blue is, uh, more of our earth science units, red is our physical science units, and green is the life science units. Uh, the one thing that was very particular with all the elementary teachers when we looked at planning this out, we went to looking at the life science units in the spring. This is where we have different things from mealworms to, to butterflies, to, uh, all sorts of different fish, you name it. It's a, it's a pretty exciting place, uh, in the elementary schools. Basically, it's like PetSmart across four buildings. Uh, but one thing that's great about these units is you can see this, uh, structure and sequence of how it evolves from kindergarten on up. Uh, and also, which is interesting for elementary, is, uh, I'm in the process right now of looking at PD options that are self-paced for staff to look at how the notebooking evolves, uh, as they go through grades K to six. Uh, up next, we look at our middle schools at Parker and McCarthy. Uh, we continue to use FOS in grades five and six. And again, they still have the same resources with regards to ThinkLink. And I have those units titled up there. So grade five, we start off with earth and sun, progress over to living systems. We decided to do things a little bit differently with grade six. So grade six actually kinda kicks off where the grade five left off, where we just go life science into life science. Uh, in terms of grades seven and eight, we use McGraw-Hill-I science. Uh, typically, some of us might remember way back in the day, our grades six, seven, and eight were completely layered, right? Where eighth grade was only earth science, seventh grade was only life science, and sixth grade just had a mix of different things that were there. Uh, and we tended to take a little bit of a hybrid approach. The state frameworks do list six, seven, and eight, uh, standards in terms of life, earth, and physical. However, they also give that option for districts of how you wanna sequence this. So we ended up taking an approach where students still had physical science spiraled throughout their six, seven, and eight years in terms of chemistry, which was aligned in front of the life science frameworks. Very analogous to what happens in our biology classes. And then the last topic in grade eight, as we finish off our earth science frameworks, we move into topics in physics. Physics standards are actually a seventh grade standard within Massachusetts. We decided to push this actually as late as possible, partly because the mathematical requirement that goes with physics. Uh, and we did see an increase in how students were able to do with this in terms of looking at their math skills and related into that standard. Uh, and then up to the high school. So this is a, uh, typical grade of what actually parents will receive on, uh, eighth grade family night. And I wanted to put this up here just to kinda reiterate, you know, hopefully we don't have to wait till eighth grade family night to see what does it look like in terms of what happens at Chelmsford High School. We have a lot of different option, uh, excuse me, options that happen at the high school. Uh, one big change that people might notice is this was about four or five years ago, we used to have physical science as a freshman science class. It was actually the class I took, uh, as a freshman 30 years ago. Yes, I'm dating myself on that number. Uh, but we made a switch to go into environmental science, CP. Environmental science is a course that the state has also said there's a, there's a lot of different options and engagement for students within this topic. Uh, and again, about 30% of our students take biology honors as freshmen, the remaining take environmental science CP. But if you look at this progression, this is one thing that I'm very, very, uh, pleased with our science department. We have students that can come in and do bio honors, for example. And depending on their math skills or what they're looking for, uh, in terms of content, they actually might move to a chemistry CP. So yes, that's a different level. But then the other nice thing is we also have some of those students, actually many students, then go into AP Bio. So our programming for science at the high school is, does not lock you in to be, if I'm in a CP course, I have to be in the CP course my entire time at Chelmsford High School. We do have kids move around in terms of levels, and that flexibility is very important because it does feel like they can succeed in a different subject area at a different level. In terms of AP offerings, we offer AP Physics 1, AP Physics C, AP Chem, AP and Viscie, AP Bio. Our kids have a lot of different, um, positive experiences with this. In terms of electives, we've been pretty consistent in our electives. Uh, we have two options for biotechnology for students, which is great. Anatomy and physiology, which has been a very popular class, uh, forensics and intro to organic chemistry. I'm happy to say we have a large amount of students right now who are very, very interested in chemistry, extremely interested, which is fun to see. Uh, but talking about the impact of this, so when we made this change, there was some concern about, well, what would this do to our AP offerings in science? So I wanted to share, just going back five years, how did the sections change, right? How, how many, uh, how many offerings do we have? And our sections are based on what kids want to take. So we had this change where we went from physical science to environmental science. And one thing that we can notice here is our AP biology offerings has increased. We currently go up to four sections this year of AP Bio. Um, and I can say going into next year, we're looking at the same number of sections, alright? So we've had an increase. Uh, AP chemistry has typically been the same about one section, but those sections have gotten larger, so we're pushing a very full section of that next year. AP and Viscie also, we've seen an increase. And this has gone up, and I think we can kinda see the correlation causation here. Kids took in Viscie as a freshman, they're looking at a much more rigorous option as a senior, and we can see how that section plays out. AP Physics 1 and AP Physics C, these have stayed as two and one. These mirror our AP Calculus AB and our AP Calculus BC sections as well. And there is a correlation between students who have taken AK, AP Calc BC and AP Physics C because of the calculus requirement with AP Physics C. In terms of our AP offerings, we can see we have more AP sections, our scores have also increased. Alright, so this is not just more kids being able to take it, this is more kids also being able to perform when they take it. So this is one post-secondary option that I like to think of because AP is college offering. The other one we look at is dual enrollment. So we're fortunate enough to have four dual enrollment options for science at the high school. Our CP chemistry curriculum is aligned with Middlesex's Chem 121. This is your intro to chemistry. That's a four-credit class. Uh, CP biotechnology aligns to an intro to bio, that's a bio 120. And even our elective of forensic science aligns to Middlesex's, uh, Sci 130, which is a forensic science course. Last but not least, a senior option for, uh, environmental studies, which is CP. It aligns with Middlesex's Envai 115. What's nice about each of these courses, yes, that these are more of an intro-science dual enrollment credit. It doesn't necessarily align with a STEM offering if they're looking to do that post-secondary. But if a student is more interested in humanities, business, et cetera, this is an opportunity for them to get the credits in the sciences that they may require while they're still here at Chelmsford High School, which is a nice offering for them. Uh, up next, we're gonna pivot. We're gonna look at the Capitol, or excuse me, the, um, the renovations that we're fortunate enough to have happen at McCarthy and the high school. First off, McCarthy. I remember a couple of years ago, we had our transition where we had our five, six students go to Parker, seven and eight went to McCarthy. Uh, and part of this process, I had some staff say to me, like, we have some concerns about different rooms that we're looking at that we'd potentially have. We looked at the science rooms that were there back in the 50s and 60s, and we said, we're gonna look at using these as science rooms. Again, everything kinda comes full circle. Uh, so some of the concerns they had is, you know, we have these fixed lab benches, they don't move, you know, the storage of them is a little off. Not every room was equitable in terms of water resources. If you know anything about middle school labs or even high school labs in general, having water resources is actually very important. Uh, and that was a mix across what we saw in seven and eight. Also, lab equipment. We do have some lab equipment, we, we do need, uh, some power supply, right? Student Chromebooks, they do not come in with them charged every day as much as they like to think they do. Uh, but we also have some equipment, especially in grade seven, we have to plug this in. And then finally, not last but not least with this was we had issues with, like, storage closets, right? We had a lot of different, um, cabinet systems in there. They just weren't, like, they were very skinny, almost like for maps that we used to have. It just didn't align with what we had now. So all these concerns came into place. We were able to put, uh, some things together and say, okay, let's look at these rooms. So the picture on the left just kinda gives you an idea of what one of our teachers' rooms looked like. We had these desks kinda like fit in, we had the three lab benches, not all the water worked on this. This is next. Those are not current eighth grade students. That was the, uh, the teachers. Yeah, listen, we're, we're really pushing the kids now, uh, let me tell you. But what's great is when you look at, so this room, when you take everything out of it, this is a large amount of usable space, right? So taking this large amount of usable space, one of the big things I tried to prioritize, whether seventh, eighth grade teachers, is how can we have furniture that's kinetic? How can kids move around? How can it be equitable across each teacher for each subject? And how can it be something that we can be more dynamic in terms of our instruction? So one of the teachers was fortunate enough to share a lot of this with me. Uh, so you can see, obviously, the rooms look fantastic. Every room right now has brand-new furniture, new flooring, everything's painted. Every room has three water sources in terms of sinks, um, and multiple power options. We even added power options, uh, this last vacation. So what I want to show you, these next couple of slides is, so this is a first, like, general setup. We have our tables, we have our stools. That's how the teacher has the room set up if the kids are taking an assessment. And one of the things to teach you is, I'm gonna look at different ways to set up the room based on different lessons I'm giving to see which setup is the most engaging and actually best fit for that topic. Uh, wet lab setups is something else they've never been able to do. And this is for each teacher. So they can actually have wet lab stations that kids can rotate through. Station rotation with science is actually a very efficient way to do lab investigations. A couple others, there's a horseshoe pattern. This was more engaged in terms of like a, a general class dialogue. Uh, it was great because the teacher actually said to me, I'm gonna do this lesson for this topic. I think it was something with regards to, it was something with earth science. Uh, she had it with a horseshoe setup. The next block that came in pivoted, changed it, and put it in a partner debate setup to see which one of these is actually gonna work best. So based on this type of stuff that we have in the room, that quick of a switch, we're able to make that change and see what works for our kids. So all in all, that is right out of the gate. This has been a huge positive impact in terms of our seventh and eighth grade students. Uh, it's even funny, some of the students at the high school have said, you know, why didn't you do this before, like, when I was down there? Uh, but again, this is, you know, I just wanna say thank you. This is a huge, huge, huge help to our seventh and eighth grade curriculum. Uh, and the staff love the room setups. I mean, it's also the technology that goes into it, the storage spaces, the setups, it's been working fantastic. So thank you for your support to make that happen. And we have a little technical difficulty here. There we go. Up next, biotechnology. Uh, so we had two closets, uh, downstairs in our lovely first-floor science wing. Uh, had a lot of stuff that was in it, but were able to move some things around. And we looked at these two closets and we said, how can we actually give a space where kids can do biotechnology in a lab environment? And this was something we got feedback from that said, you know, how can we have our own dedicated space? Biotechnology has a lot of supplies. It has a lot of equipment. To move these things around, room to room, to take these things in and out of closets when you might have a class that needs it, it's a lot on the staff, right? It's a lot for the kids to see what's going on. So we said, alright, how, from a design standpoint, how can we make two spaces into one? And this just gives you a little snapshot. There was one large dividing wall. So, uh, last summer, we were able to go full demolition and take these two rooms and make it into one large room. What's great about the space, even though it's kinda shaped like an L, the kids were able to see what's going on between each other throughout the entire space, even how we have the TV set up. And the feedback that we had from kids, uh, when they went in there this, oop, sorry, when they went in there this year is, one of the first things is, they feel like they're in a lab. Right? They walk in, they know that this is a space where they, they're gonna set up, they're gonna be doing things related to biotechnology. From a teacher's standpoint, everything can be set up in here. All the equipment can live in here. Nothing has to be moved around. Uh, we're fortunate enough that our partnership with Middlesex Community College, as we look at that dual enrollment class, we just toured their facility a couple of weeks ago in terms of our early college talk that we're looking at. For us as a team to walk into that lab and then look in our lab, we really have an idea of what we have to do. We also have industry partners that can say, we have this space, it's dedicated for this. How can we make this work? Uh, there's a few snapshots here of what the kids have been able to do. The kids love going in the room. They do ask the teacher, are we going down there today? You know, they can't wait. But on the flip side of this, this is also a space that can pivot if we have to. Yes, it's set up for biotechnology right now. We have a large amount of kids who love things related to, let's say, nursing. If we have to use a space for different things where it's like a clinical space setup, we can make that happen based on how the room is set up, which is a really fortunate thing. So it's not something we're stuck, we have to use this for the end of time. We can modify the spaces need be in terms of what kids need for science. So this has been great. So again, thank you for your support with this. Uh, awesome addition, and I can't wait to see, we have more sections of biotechnology running next year, so we get to see more of the positive impacts with this. Last but not least, the most favorite topic, MCAS. So, uh, some things that you've, you know, seen over the years, whether you've had with your own children taking an MCAS assessment, from a teaching perspective, seeing this. Uh, about five or six, actually a little more than that, uh, seven or eight years ago, the big push was how can we make these questions quote-unquote more engaging, uh, and more relevant? So they put in things like drag-and-drop, uh, fill-in, uh, multi-select to try and have the kids actually pivot with technology or use technology to give their answers. And these are just a couple snapshots with it. All in all, it's very similar to what we might remember from when we took multiple-choice tests or open-response questions, you know, growing up. The big change is that this is now gonna transition for our grade five and our grade eight MCAS science assessment. As of now, there is no change later for the high school assessment, just to be clear. There is no change later for the high school assessments. Uh, these are gonna go into effect for SY27. These are focused on performance tasks. What's nice about these is that they actually wanna look more so at the investigative and experimental process, not just on what students know and memorize. Obviously, it's support what kids know, right? But this is taking the change from, can you tell me what you remember versus can you actually do a science experiment on an assessment? Now, we're not giving kids beakers, we're not giving them chemicals, we're doing this digitally, alright? Kids are actually going to get analysis, or excuse me, they're gonna get data for analysis on the MCAS test in grades five and eight. Uh, LinkedIn, the presentation, is the site that can take you to the performance tasks. I know that's something you just, you know, on your free time, feel free, play around with it. It's actually pretty fun. Uh, initial feedback on this was, how are the kids gonna do this? Alright, this looks complicated, there's a lot of different instructions here. And just to give you an idea of what it looks like, these questions are storyline-based. And the storyline, uh, it comes to something in terms of like an interactive, there's some background information. They try to make this relevant to what's around us here in Massachusetts and New England, which is a nice touch. And modeling that also gives a sense for the kids of, you know, I can relate to what's being asked of me here. Initial feedback actually is overwhelmingly positive. There is data that has been released with pilot groups. Student engagement with the assessments is higher. They've been using student feedback as they pivot to redesign the assessment. Student performance is higher. Student subgroup performance is higher on this change in assessment. So as much as we had our fears of, are the kids gonna be able to do this digitally, we're seeing across the state some, some improvements with this, which is great. Uh, so you can see, like, here it is, the, you know, a couple of people are at a park, they're looking at the leaves. Uh, they ask questions, and those questions, we look at our science practices, and then they're able to dive into a situation where they can now say, okay, here's the situation, we need to answer these questions, let's actually run an experiment. So I have the, I have the screen caps you hear of, there's different experiments that you could do. So you could look at, we're gonna put more leaves in the pond, we're gonna change the water temperature, we're gonna put more organisms in the pond. What does that do to the water? It lists instructions for the kids, they hit run, and they get different data for different setups. They have to take that data, synthesize it, and then answer the questions. So this is a very, very different approach to assessment in general. Forget science, right? If we look at any other assessment that we are used to taking or our kids taking, this is a very different way to do it. State has been great. There's a lot of resources with this from DESI. Uh, also, uh, other districts have been sharing a lot of different things with this. Uh, for us, here locally in Chelmsford, uh, our big goal with this, we have to help prepare our kids for this, but I also have to make sure that I help prepare our staff, right? Specifically, we're looking at this, uh, in terms of grades three through eight. Last summer, we started really diving in in grades six, seven, and eight. We started to look at developing performance tasks within those grades. Uh, grade seven was able to generate quite a few, grade six had one, grade eight had a few, and we started to try these this year to get student feedback, get some data. Are they the same digitally as what the state has? No. There's not a lot of digital resources out there that mirror this, so we have to be creative. We have to use resources that are available to us to make an analogy, to make it work. Uh, so again, from a P, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Just related to that, so I have a fifth grader who I was talking to about this, and he's like, oh yeah, we did those this year for MCAS. You said it starts in 2027. Would it, would he have been exposed to these kinda samples?
Great question. So there was initial exposure in terms of a pilot perspective, so they need to get that pilot data. So sorry, I wasn't clear with that. So in terms of it being full rollout, everybody in it's accountable, SY27.
Got it.
They started giving a couple examples last year, but this year, they weren't clear how many examples they'd have, but there were examples there.
Yeah, 'cause I was talking about it, my son's like, yeah, we did it like, and it sounded exactly like the sample one that I went through, so.
And it's funny, 'cause even myself walking around the rooms after, for them to say like, hey, like, we did an experiment today. So that, for them to say that instead of saying we took MCAS, I thought that was kind of a unique thing to hear, especially from fifth graders. Uh, so again, to make sure we're ready for this, PD, I have to make sure this is available, so we have department meeting time we can utilize here, early release days. But again, like I said at the beginning, trying to find some self-paced options so staff can work at their own pace to look through some material to make this work. And then obviously, we have to look at what DESI has for, uh, some resources, share those with staff as much as possible, but also answer questions that staff has. So, thank you so much for your time about science. More than happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions?
You were very thorough. I don't have any questions.
The science guy, they're always very thorough.
We, we try to be.
Get the data, huh?
I'm gonna ask you. So, John, first of all, I wanna congratulate you. I think, um, I remember when you came onboard. My girls were in elementary school, I think, at that time. And I think you, th- the whole department, the whole area has risen tremendously, so congratulations.
Thank you. I, I have a, I have a phenomenal staff. Like, I, I, there's no way, anything I talk about tonight, it does not happen without the people that I have in the rooms. Like, there's no other way to say that.
And that's wonderful, but you're leading the team, which, and bringing them all together and coordinating, which is phenomenal, okay? And I, I agree with you. I think we have top-notch staff. I'm seeing the results of it as my girls go through college. And, um, you know, BC took AP Bio.
Yep.
Okay, and, uh, that's amazing. That's wonderful. Um, absolutely terrific. Now, question. Coming down the road, what do you see as the need for more, I think, interaction maybe? Or, um, interdisciplinary mathematical, more bringing in more of the math, bringing in more of the, um, technology into what's going on in science, only because as I see it going forward, already MCAS is looking at data analysis. Which is where I think we're going with this, and more and more labs are now using existing data and, uh, bringing all that together. And the scientist basically needs to be a critical thinker and all of that in one second, that kind of thing. How do we develop more of that going forward in the student? I think it's gonna require a lot of cooperation throughout the system, so.
So I think, I think there's two parts to answer that. I think the first part is, how do we promote an opportunity or opportunities for staff within, I'll talk from the high school perspective, to have interdisciplinary goals? Right? Uh, teachers do have SMART goals that they craft from a student learning and a professional practice perspective. So other opportunities where we can take a science teacher and a math teacher, develop a professional practice goal that looks at aligning the math expectations in terms of the science expectations. Or even how do we actually differentiate that higher to give students, students different examples? Uh, and that's something I have said to my staff, you know, and I actually, unfortunately, I do have one, uh, chemistry teacher and a math teacher discussing this now. But I'm trying to also push this even more so, even down to the middle school. It's, you know.
That's great.
We wanna do this together. The second way I like to look at this is, you know, high schools have to make kids career and college ready, right? I'm not saying that one is more important than the other, but I do think our kids have to be ready, whether it's 36 hours after this Saturday and they go into work on that Monday. Whether it's after a credentialing program after six months, two years after an associate's, four years after a degree, or even six years after a master's. We want, they're, they're gonna go to work, alright? So at some point, they have to be ready for that, and I want our curriculum to really expose them to that. I truly believe we have to get the support from local industry, right? We have a phenomenal rising internship program. Our kids did a lot of great work. Some of us saw what that, you know, what that looked like in the gym, uh, last week. And the input that they give us is huge, right? This is what they're looking for, alright? This is what they need. And we do get that from our current relationships right now. But I think, how can we facilitate that to be stronger? How can they actually be more involved? How can they actually take more of our kids for an internship? How can they actually come in and talk to our kids more? And it's tough. Science is a world where we're trying to prepare our kids for careers that haven't even been invented yet, right? So this is, it's one of those weird ways to look at it. So, you know, but again, any industry relationship that we can foster beyond what we have, that is probably the biggest need that we have. Because they're gonna give us this concrete idea of what it needs to look like for our kids.
Wait, you don't wanna talk, go down the AI path at all?
I, I, I think we only have so much time for tonight, so that's the.
But that's coming.
Yes.
Smart pivot, um, because AI is a big topic unto itself. I wanted to follow up because I, I was gonna ask a question also about interdisciplinary stuff. Um, specifically, I was curious, so if I remember correctly, you are involved in the district's, um, Innovation Pathways Initiative. And I was curious how this sort of sequence of science courses that you shared at the high school level works, um, with students who've selected a specific pathway that they take. Is it the same? Are there kind of recommended ones that go with different pathways, or do they take things in a different order?
Yeah, great question. So the one pathway in Innovation Pathways relates to, uh, the science department is the life science pathway. So life science pathway focuses on, uh, students going towards a biotechnology lane or an environmental technology lane. Those students all take biology, they all take chemistry, and then it's either AP Bio and AP and Viscie or environmental studies, or it's more of the biotech class lens. It's just four courses that they need for the innovation pathway. So there's not a heavy load at all from other subject areas. With that said, I think in turn, like, correct me from all of what you're asking with it, from an interdisciplinary perspective, I'm trying to look at this more so with the industry partnership.
Right.
So if I look at kids who are looking to do a life science pathway, like, so we've had this, uh, with, uh, local water districts, right? Local water districts also have finance and accounting. We have a business pathway. So actually, how can we use a, an industry partner for each of our pathways? Water districts have engineering. We have an engineering pathway.
Yeah.
Right? So every company has to have a business side, an engineering side. If it's a science company, which we're fortunate enough to have so many in this area, they have the science side. So, I think having kids who might be in a business pathway, but still use a life science partner, is a really cool thing to see. Because then the student realizes, wait a minute, I want to do business, but yes, that can actually happen within the science field. So we're trying to expose kids that way, too.
So we don't have a clean energy pathway right now?
We do not. That is one of the offerings from DESI. It's something we've looked at, but at this time, we have not looked at expanding that into our offerings.
Okay. Yeah, one of the reasons I was asking about the interdisciplinary is because I know there's certain courses in science that would obviously have to align with when students take civics at the high school level and do civics projects, but I could envision there being opportunities for students to be doing, you know, certain topics of science lend themselves well to be thinking about doing civics action projects related to science and how those could be RIF opportunities for collaboration if the sequences lined up right and things like that.
I think, well, right now, I mean, I'm fortunate enough to see a lot of the student presentations, like AP Research, AP Seminar. There's kids who do science-related presentations. So like, that right now is, and this is something Steph Quinn and I have talked about quite a bit. How do we make this work between the two and kind of harness their passion for what they want to do?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alright, well, thank you as always.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Great presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Geez, I didn't even have to announce anything. You're already up and moving.
Excuse me?
I said I didn't even have to announce anything, and you're already up and moving.
Here I am, sorry. Oh, good, it's nice and big. That's what I need.
Guys hire only the best, only the best.
Kelly Rogers.
That's right.
Kelly is our department coordinator of many English language learners, reading, Title I services, and she's here tonight to share some updates with us, so, Kelly, without further ado.
Great, thanks for having me. So tonight, I'm gonna just talk a little bit about how we meet the diverse needs of all of our students for the departments that I support. Like Jay said, I support the ELL department, K through 12 reading, K through four literacy, and also our Title I and intervention program. And I really love this quote, just thinking about, every student can learn, just not on the same day or in the same way. So just keeping that in mind about how we approach meeting the needs of all of our students. So we have a multi-tiered support for our diverse learners. Our population is very diverse here in Chelmsford. We serve a wide range of learners through our general education program. And again, I'm gonna focus on K through four literacy tonight. We have our Title I Reading and Math Intervention that takes place K through eight. And also our Tier Two Reading Intervention with our reading specialists, we're fortunate to have that programming K through 12. And also our English learners, K through 12. And the special education would be included in that, but I do not support that department. And just thinking about that multi-tiered system of supports that we implement to ensure that all of our students receive the support that they need at the right level. This is really just so important. Even the state of Massachusetts, our teachers are actually evaluated on standard two, teaching all students. And that really is our professional obligation about how are we gonna incorporate those scaffolds and, you know, interventions for our students, for all of our students, to make sure that their needs are met. So I'm gonna start talking about our English language learners, and I just want to begin with talking about, I'm gonna refer to our English language learners tonight as Ls or ELLs, English learners or English language learners. You may hear the term multilingual learner, MLs. The reason why I'm not referring to our population of English learners is because multilingual learners think of it as like a very broad term. It's got a big umbrella. A multilingual learner is a student who's developing proficiencies in multiple languages, including English. So, we can have multilingual learners who actually aren't part of our L program. Kind of makes, just trying to kind of clarify that, because sometimes, our English learners are multilingual learners, but our multi, all of our multilingual learners are not Ls, if that makes sense. We have approximately, well, it's not approximate, I give you an exact number. 279 L students representing 85 languages, just to show you how diverse we are here in Chelmsford. We have 58 students, just proudly reporting that just, we just got our access test results back a few weeks ago, and we had 58 students who exited our program. So that's, that's great news. Among that number, just to let you know, that's reported out, we do do screening at our CHIPS program. And about approximately 20 students are identified as Ls at CHIPS. They don't get direct instruction at our CHIPS program, because the idea is that those students are really immersed in the English language in their classrooms at a very early age. They're screened again when they come to us in kindergarten, but just kind of giving you an idea of what the, what the number looks like. And just thinking about our population, people often ask me and talk about that, oh, the population, our L population is really increasing. And it's not so much our number is increasing, it's that our needs are changing. Our population, our L population has changed. So we have now, we have students coming from, you know, a variety of countries that are refugees or immigrants. You may have heard the term SLIF. It's like all these acronyms are SLIF students. Those are our students with limited or interrupted formal learning, formal education learning. We have a lot of newcomers that are coming to us. So, it's not so much our numbers are growing dramatically, it's that the, the needs are really changing for us. And how are we gonna meet their needs, right? How are we addressing our diverse learner? So we'll talk about that tonight. The top three languages that, that the student populations or families speak in Chelmsford are English number one, Spanish, Portuguese, and Gujarati. Gujarati is an Indian dialect. So those are our top three languages. We try to provide a lot of our translations going home in Spanish, Portuguese, or Gujarati. But of course, parents can request translations. That's through like an X, we have that, we manage that through our X2 portal. And anyone that needs a translation or an interpretation, we provide that as well, and we keep track of that through our portal. So we have our resources to support our Ls. We've been using the National Geographic curriculum for some time. However, we did update it recently, I think it was 2023. And this is primarily focuses on the social sciences and science, you'll be happy to hear that, John. We're doing science topics with the students, but with the intention of increasing their English proficiency. So how are the, you know, it's scaffolded with, you know, grammar supports, writing supports. Just, it's a, it's a very culturally diverse curriculum as well, and it's very well received by the teachers and the students as well. So, we also have, like I mentioned, we have a lot of families who needs translation or interpretations. And so we have communication tools that we have in the district. We're fortunate to have Language Line, which is literally just an automated telephone system that you can use 24/7. You can pick up the phone in a parent conference, or an IEP meeting, anytime. And you can get an interpreter on the line within two minutes. It's pretty amazing. It is very rare that we cannot get an interpreter in the language that's needed. Very rare. It only happens, like I said, a handful of times, and if not, they try their hardest to get an interpreter, and we may have to wait more than two minutes, but generally, we get them. We also have these little handheld devices. I brought one with me tonight. One is called the Pocket Talk. We use those primarily at the elementary level. And then this new one is called the Vasco. These are instant, basically, translation devices that students and teachers can use to communicate with one another. Especially, like I said, we have this diverse population. We have a lot of newcomers coming in with languages other than, you know, Spanish, Portuguese, or Gujarati. And so, this particular device, we piloted this year at Chelmsford High School with our L teacher, Colleen O'Donnell. And this device is unique in that the, the teacher has the device. The students can download an app on their phone and just, they can choose and select what language they want it translated in. So a high school teacher teaching biology, John, or mathematics, some of these higher level topics, while the teacher is teaching them and lecturing, then that is translated into that student's language on their cellphone. So pretty, pretty powerful. We're gonna be rolling this out even further. We just got additional devices, so we're gonna roll it out further next year, starting in the fall with more of the staff at the high school. And then the Pocket Talk is very similar, it just doesn't have that app option. And we, those have been very successful at our elementary level. Super exciting news is working alongside with Bill Silver and Linda. We also have just, I think it's been purchased, I hope it has, but we did a 30-day trial, which I think we're getting it. The Xerox Workflow Central, what this is, is a, it's a copier and an app that is used to translate documents. This is a game changer for us. So documents, meaning IEPs, that are very costly to get translated, you know, out of, by a private company. It translates report cards. We work with the company to make sure that our report card could actually translate, because you know the formatting on that from X2 is a little bit different, but we were able to get that done. Currently, the, this, this copier or this app translates into about 50 languages to improve the accessibility for students and families. So like I said, this has really, really been helpful so far. I actually just used this last week. I was, I have an ELL summer program coming up, and we have many families that speak other languages and need translation. So I was able to plug my little invitation into the Xerox workflow, and I was able to, you know, spit out every language that I needed, and I was able to send that and communicate with families. So I'm really excited about that. We've come a long way with this over the years, I have to say. So, in talking about the, our English language learners and how, you know, what resources do teachers have to support the learners? We have the WEDA can-do descriptors, and these basically provide insight about how the Ls can participate and access the content based on their WEDA level. So a WEDA level goes from one to six. A WEDA level one would be a newcomer. A WEDA level six is somebody who's, who's gonna be exiting out of our program. And I just brought samples of these. These are all available online. Teachers have them. But they're just a grid to talk about, like, oh, okay, what is it that I'm teaching? And my student might be at this particular level, so if perhaps, like I said, I'm sorry. It's a student, if a student's at a level two emerging, I'm looking at some speaking skills. They might be able to ask simple questions. They might be able to name objects. So this is kind of telling me, what can I expect from a level two student in the speaking domain at a certain grade level? Where, okay, wait a minute, I also have a level five student in my class. What could the, what is the expectation there around speaking? Oh, okay, they could justify opinions with evidence and discussion. So it's, these are really helpful for teachers, to kind of guide them around, what is it that we can expect students to do? And also, built-in scaffolds and differentiation for them as well. So just, these are very helpful for our educators as well. And we also have foundations, which I know you've heard about through the years. This is our early literacy support phonics program. This is, we have a 30 minutes dedicated each day for this, for students K through three. And foundations provide scaffolds and supports for all of our learners, right? For our, for our learners that are our Ls, or are receiving our reading support, or, you know, Tier Two interventions. There's multisensory instructions, there's sound cards, there's letter tiles, there's gel boards. It's a very structured and sequenced program. It's very predictable for students. There's a lot of repetition. Students are able to demonstrate oral language. There's, you know, they have notebooks that they can record their, their spelling and their dictations, and they are able to echo the teacher. The teacher's able to model for them. The teachers, there's assessments built in, and teachers can go back and, and reteach concepts that weren't taught. So, again, a lot of scaffolding and differentiation within the foundations phonics program for our students at all levels, really. And again, we can meet the needs of all of our students, not only the ones that are, you know, below, working a little bit below or at grade level, but also the ones working above grade level. So for example, like foundations has, if a student's ready, you know, they're beyond, you know, word recognition, or they can, they have paragraphs, or they can be comprehending stories. So it's, it provides a lot of opportunity for all students to access the curriculum. And the next Fontis and Pennell Classroom, the next program and resource that we use at K through, I'm gonna say six, right, Linda, six? I only do the K through fourth, but yes, K through six. So, and we, we support the diverse learners with a lot of scaffolded instruction. I know the Fontis and Pennell Classroom, you've heard about the guided reading. The guided reading is small group instruction that's provided for students. And the teachers, it really gives teachers an opportunity to listen to students read their fluency. It also gives teachers an opportunity to assess their comprehension. What is it that they understand? Can they really dig deeper into answering questions, not only, you know, about the, about the story, but, you know, and within the text, beyond the text? So, it just gives teachers an opportunity to work closely with students, to assess them and to see where, and meet them where they're at, which is nice. Oral language development, their interactive read-alouds, they're just beautiful books that, that are kind of the crux of the program that provide an opportunity for, for teachers to model. And they provide, you know, visual support for our students. They can model expressive reading. And, you know, they have a lot of questioning within the interactive read-alouds as students and the class are participating in, within that text. Vocabulary and comprehension supports, those so important for all of our students, but really explicitly teaching that vocabulary, introducing those new words within context, so students understand those with visuals, or, you know, making those real-world connections. And then the multimodal learning, every, you know, we have visual representations and auditory representations for the students that when they're, you know, in our interactive read-alouds, or when they're writing. The writing and literacy development also, again, teachers are able to model that. There's options for all of the levels to write about reading, and, you know, their drawing, their labeling, their modeling. And the most beautiful thing to think about our Fontis and Pennell Classroom program is it is diverse, and it's culturally rich. The stories, they're, you know, they, they, the context come from a variety of different cultures, languages, and experiences. So there's a lot that you can take with that to introduce students to a variety of concepts. And then I'm gonna talk a little bit about the Tier Two resources, because I support the Tier Two departments, like the reading specialists and the intervention and Title I. So Tier Two Intervention Resources to support our learning. We have LLI as one of our supports, that's Level Literacy Intervention, K through eight. And again, that provides, you know, an opportunity for the, the reading specialists or the interventionists to do some guided reading, small group instruction with our students. We also, there's, within foundations, we also have foundations intervention kits that all of our reading specialists have, K through three. They're able, the students are able to practice their sight words, blends, diagrams, paragraphs, phrases. We also have foundations decodables, K through two, that we're able to, you know, focus on specific concepts, you know, blending or segmenting. Happy to report that we're actually gonna be introducing our foundations decodables to all of the grade levels next year, K through two, based on feedback from teachers. They felt as though they, they would, they needed this resource for some of the students that weren't getting the, say, intervention or Tier Two intervention. And so, we're gonna be putting those in the classrooms for the teachers. Yeah.
So Tier One kids will have access to those decodables as well? That was going to be one of my questions later. Well, you answered it now. Well, you answered it now. Excellent. Thank you.
They are, because basically that was the feedback and the need from many teachers. Right, exactly. So, we listen, right? Because honestly, we want to give kids what they need. That's what it's all about, right? Teaching all students, and if that's what they need, then we're going to put that in place. And I did, I met with a reading specialist yesterday, actually, and we had this conversation because, you know, what they do is unique, right? Because they're providing a Tier 2 resource, and now they're like, well, the gen ed, the, all the teachers are going to have the decodables. And we're like, that's okay. It's okay if you're, if a student sees a book two or three times, right? And they're practicing something within the classroom setting and practicing it also, you know, in a small group setting with the reading specialist. So, yeah. And then also, just talking about the phonics, phonics for reading at our middle school level, this is a very small population that needs phonics instruction. As you know, we look at our iReady data all the time, and it is a very small population, but there are a few students that perhaps see the reading specialist that need some more phonics instruction. And to be honest with you, the foundations just wasn't developmentally appropriate for our middle grades, right? It just wasn't meeting that need. So, phonics for reading is part of curriculum, it's the same publisher as iReady. I'm going to say Curriculum Associates. I don't know if that's right.
All right.
Is that the publisher? Is that the publisher? Yeah. So, we have that for our middle grades, for, the reading specialists have that at the 5, 6, 7, 8 level. And then also DIBELS progress monitoring. So, all of our students participate in the DIBELS three times throughout the year, right? For our benchmark data. And what we also have is we have the option for classroom teachers or the reading specialists to also do some progress monitoring with our students. This is super helpful, especially when a student's brought up for an SST, right? They're not making the progress that they need, but we're able to do some progress monitoring, so we're able to really hone in on specific skills. You know, it might be fluency, it might be letter identification, sounds, it just depends on what they need. But here, the teacher or the reading specialist can progress monitor the student to show growth over time, and then kind of set goals for that student just to see how they're doing. Another great resource that we have in place are the iReady tools for instruction. All teachers have access to this, but you can hone in on specific skills, on specific standards. What is it that students need help with? And we can readily access this through the portal in iReady, which is great. And another thing that was purchased a few years back for our intervention program, our Title 1/Intervention, because not all of our schools are Title 1, but we provide the intervention to them, is the Focus Mathematics Program, K through 8. And our interventionists do use this. And this, again, is just, it's a, it's a, it's kind of a deep dive into a small set of core concepts, for mathematical concepts that a student isn't getting. So, the interventionist can kind of ferret out and pull different activities and work that the students might need into the Focus Mathematics Program. So, that's, that's been working very well for our Tier 2 resources as well. So, you can see, we actually have a lot of resources in place for our, to meet our diverse learners. We're fortunate to have them. A lot of districts don't have as many resources as we do, so we're very, quite lucky. And then what my role is, my role to make sure that, you know, we're, we're kind of staying, you know, we're aligning, or we're, I'm aware of what's happening in other districts in Massachusetts, that we're supporting the learners through collaboration. So, I'm a member of a few professional organizations. One is called MELC, and this is an organization where that is L leaders in Massachusetts, and we get together probably three or four times throughout the year. But this is a really helpful organization for me as a coordinator, because I'm able to talk with and collaborate with other leaders in the, in Massachusetts around policies and regulations for our L students. For example, like the Home Language Survey, they have some new protocol coming up, and I'm able to, you know, talk with others around that, and how are they handling it, and what are they doing? The Xerox copier that we are, that we piloted, that also came from this working group of like, hey, what are you using? These copiers are phenomenal. What kind do you have, and what are you piloting? So, it's very helpful for me to be connected with these associations. MatSal's great also, that's another, that's another organization that the teachers are also a part of, the L teachers. Last week, we all went to, they went to the MatSal conference for two days. I met them there for a day, and it was great, because you get to attend a variety of sessions and, you know, learn about best practices. And, I mean, I attended a session on SLIF students and newcomers, and you walk away feeling like, you know what? Everyone's going through this right now, or all these districts, and how are they handling it, and what are their ideas? So, just kind of gaining that perspective around best practice and kind of rejuvenating me around, well, what could we do, and what can I bring to Chelmsford? Because I'm always thinking about that, because it keeps the job exciting. And then also the Literacy Leaders Network, that's another, another organization. It's around, you know, what are people, what are folks doing in Massachusetts for effective literacy? So, I'm part of that as well, and attend those meetings several times throughout the year. So, that is just kind of a little summation of supporting the needs of all of our learners. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Anybody questions?
I think Marie's going to ask questions.
I think she is.
No, I meant to tell you about L-PAC.
Yeah, L's her thing.
I know. Oh, I didn't integrate the L-PAC.
You can go first. Can I do the L first?
What, you want, can I tell you?
I just want to make one quick comment. I just want to say thank you very much for your work. I work with some of the students outside of the school, and the L program is one of the things they talk about a lot, but mostly talk about the L teachers, and like how important they are to them, and like they're like confidants, they're like the people they talk to, and their experience being around kids from all over the world that have had crazy experiences. They said it's been really informative for them, like just that they're not alone, right? Because everybody's got a story. So, thank you.
Yeah, the teachers are passionate.
All right, all right.
They really are, they're great. They're just, they're special people. They really are.
Yeah, 100%.
Absolutely. They make a huge difference in the lives of each one of them. Question for you, you said like 50, the number of students transitioning out is...
58.
58, that's great. So, on average, let's say a student starts the L program in grade 1. Do you see them going into middle school still in the L program?
Yeah, so the trajectory is for an L student to exit out of the program is six years upon entering. Yes. And so, our numbers are much larger in the elementary schools than they are at the middle and high school. So, our middle and high school, I mean, we have at both middle schools, I want to say, I'm going to estimate, because it varies, we, month by month, but about 20 per building. At the elementary level, it's much more than that, right? It could be 55 at each building. So, yes, so the numbers are not as great at the middle and high school level, because a lot of the students, if they come to us early, they've exited out of our program.
Okay, got it.
And you did ask me a question, you wanted me to talk a little bit about the L-PAC.
You might.
Yeah, no, not at all.
Talk a little bit about the program.
So, the L-PAC is English Language Parent Advisory Committee that we are required to have. And throughout the years, I have tried many different things to get L parents involved in their students' education, the school community, whatnot. So, I think I'm on year, I don't know, seven or eight of this now. So, I don't know, like, I do have these brainstorms, it's like when I used to teach in the summertime, I'm like, okay, how can I do, what can we do different? What can I do? So, I had this idea last summer, that this year, what we were going to do, because we found that a lot of the L parents and families, they're, they're connected with their schools. They're not necessarily connected with the whole district, if they just have maybe one child in the, in a particular school. And they not, don't necessarily want to travel to the high school for a meeting at 6:00 PM. So, what we did this year is I had an L-PAC representative, we call them parent partners, because it seems a little less, I don't know, scary. And we had parent partners at each, at each school. The idea was to get a parent partner at each school, attend all of the PTO meetings, to be the L representative at that particular school. And it worked very well at the schools that I was able to get the L parents. So, we have seven buildings, I was able to get four out of seven this year. Next year, I'll work to get seven out of seven. But the idea is, and again, like you said, John, like, these L teachers are so passionate. I have, a lot of the L teachers actually attended the PTO meetings with the parent representative. So, that was, that, it just, it seemed to be more meaningful, because that parent then feels connected to the school. So, it's just kind of starting like that. And again, me being part of these organizations, I know the, I now know that we're not alone. Like, I know the frustration around, frustration, I, probably not the right word to use, but getting, the difficulty in getting this L-PAC running and being, having it be meaningful, right? Because other districts are going through the same thing, we are.
It's much more challenging to have participation from parents and so on at the level. But, and to comment on that, at Center, I was the rep to the Center of PTO, I often, I saw the representatives there.
Oh, good.
And they were participating in the meetings and so on, and I thought that was excellent. But it is very challenging, because they're very transitory, there are different levels, and the needs that the families have are huge. So, it takes a lot of time to get through it, you know? And then to have time to also participate is difficult. But that's great. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I just had like a global question. I know that, you know, a lot of the things that you're associated with are grant-funded with your connections, and are you hearing anything about security of those grant funds? And, you know...
Last time I talked to Desi, they said, Kelly, it's business as usual. I said, okay.
I just said, no, maybe because of your connection versus others, you had more information about things, yeah.
Exactly. Day by day, I don't know, it's a hard call, and everybody's going through it, right? And I try to tell, I try to explain that to people, because we have the Title 1 interventionists, and they just ended May 23rd, and we have such a great group, and a great group of interventionists. And so many asked, are we coming back next year? What's the status? And again, they said, this isn't a Chelmsford thing, this is, you know, this is a federal grant, and, you know, unfortunately, we have to see.
Okay. Great. All right, any other questions?
I don't have questions, but a couple of things that I just have kind of, kind of like requests for consideration. One thing is, you know, I was a kindergarten, first grade teacher, so literacy and reading has always been important to me, and I've tried to keep my hands in a little bit of it, especially with my involvement with the school committee. I did go to a workshop in the fall on ELL or MLL and science of reading. It was some, I think it was University of Michigan that they were from, it was a study. But they said something I thought was really interesting, and it certainly made sense with all my knowledge about ELL kids. And the kids who are struggling in those early years of building up their foundational skills, their phonics skills and all back, that rather than pushing more foundations, for instance, what those kids really need is a lot more opportunity for spoken language proficiency.
Yes, speaking, absolutely.
So, rather than pushing lots and lots of foundations, make sure they're getting lots and lots of opportunities for spoken.
And that's actually, we talk about that all the time at our department meetings, our L department meetings, because we look at the WEDA scores and the access, well, the access scores, and speaking over in general, last year was one of our lower, it was the lowest. And so, we like, what are we going to do to make sure that we're giving these students opportunities to speak? And what not only, so, we kind of make a concerted, concerted effort of making sure that the students have so many opportunities to be talking and speaking in the classroom. But I agree with you, speaking is paramount.
Yeah, I really made a point of that, and I thought that, that made sense to me. And my other things are just having to do with Fontis and Pennell and some concerns I've had and things I've heard from teachers. One being that it's very interactive reading or read-aloud heavy, and that teachers are concerned that the students don't have enough time to read themselves, and I think some of them really struggle how to fit the guided reading in with all the demands of that other program. So, just a request to just really keep an eye on that. And how do you help teachers figure out how to do that? And I know from a student I talk to regularly, that guided reading doesn't seem to happen often enough. It's a struggle.
Right, right. And I think too, just thinking about collaboratively working together and, you know, kind of teachers going to visit and observe other classrooms, like, what does it look like in your, because teachers are sometimes, you know, they're working in, just within their own room. But what does another classroom look like? And what does it look like there? And how is it working for them? So, I think that's important, to maybe provide those opportunities for teachers to be able to see, like, what does it look like in another classroom? Is it working for them? Right. And, you know, where are they? It's hard, right? There's a lot.
I'm told, yes, absolutely.
There's a lot, you know, you've done, it's a lot.
And then the final part was on the writing. I know it took a little while to ramp the writing piece of Fontis and Pennell up, and have definitely heard that it's not effective enough. And so, I just would like you to keep looking at ways to either supplement it or increase the rigor in the writing.
Yeah, we talk about the...
I think that's much slower to come along.
Yeah, we talk about that too. I'm talking with Abby Dick, who's the 5 through 12 ELA coordinator, just across the board, and looking at the writing scores, and what can we be providing for, for teachers? You know, is it professional development around writing, or time to work together around best practice? And how can we integrate that?
Perhaps supplement it with some other curriculum to...
Yeah, well, I mean, I think that they, it's how to access what's there. In my opinion, foundations runs very well, because it's very structured, it's very sequenced, it's step-by-step. There's no question. Fontis and Pennell Classroom, there's a little bit more leeway, you have a lot of decisions to make around...
Parts.
There's a lot of parts, exactly. And there's a little bit more freedoms around, well, what is it that my student needs, right? And then you can make those decisions based on that. And it's not as structured, but there, but the materials are there. But I think collaboration and working together around, across grade levels and across the district too.
Because what about a real shift in how writing is taught?
Yes.
And I think a lot of teachers are still struggling with that.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Thank you for your feedback.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very, anything else? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a great night.
Kelly, that was a lot of information.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Our third presentation this evening is Nancy Antolini, who's our School Nutrition Director, is here to do the year-end review. Kelly, thank you very much. Here to do the year-end review of our food service program, so.
Hello.
Nancy, welcome. We get to see you every June to review what's been happening in food service for the year. So, I know you've got another good report for us.
Thank you, and thank you for having me tonight. We'll start out with the total number of meals that we've served thus far, from August 27th of 2024 to May 22nd. Our breakfast is 192,692, lunch, 190,577, which gives us a total of 683,269. So, that wasn't like that eight years ago. So, as you can see, we did a comparison of where we were last year to this year. Exactly, so we've increased about over 43,000 between breakfast and lunch. We have, we have increased on our lunch a little bit more, like the last couple of weeks, it's really, we've really rocketed somehow at the high school especially. So, the breakfast and lunch pricing, so similar to the, let me just grab it over here so I can see it better, I'm sorry. So, similar to last school year, breakfast and lunch for school year 24, 25 is at no cost to all students. The source of the funding is similar to last school year. This school year, the USDA maintained the traditional federal funding model of free, reduced, and paid meals prices. The remainder of the funding, as was last year, is to keep all the breakfast and lunch at no cost to students, came from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as part of the FY 2025 budget. The USDA federal funding guidance for next school year is that schools will continue the traditional model of free, reduced, and paid meals options. However, the federal reimbursement rate is unknown at this time, as everything, some, there have been some cuts, that they're speaking of more cuts, and that's where they're looking at. So, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has not passed the FY 26 budget to date, therefore at this time, it is unknown if breakfast and lunch will remain at no cost to all the students for the FY 25, 26 school year. Proposals were included in both the House and the Senate versions of the budget. We are not recommending any change to the current meal prices at this time. These prices were voted on in May 17th of 2022 School Committee Meeting. As a reminder, the paid breakfast and the lunch prices needs to be greater than the amount of the USDA reimbursement, the district for free and reduced meals. Amount will... reimbursement. The district for free and reduced meals amount will be known after July 1st of this year, since free and reduced meals cannot be subsidized by paid meals. If you have any questions on that.
So we don't have to take a vote again on this?
We're not changing, well, if we have to impose the fee, we wouldn't be changing them.
Yeah.
So there's no, there's no, like, new fee to approve.
Okay. So I know we do have to do the bus fees every year, but it's, yeah, so we don't have to do this, okay? All right. Great.
So our accomplishments for, um, so our procurement this year for the FY 25, 26, unfortunately, we've had, the paper was awarded to Mansfield Paper again. Dairy is still pending, if you can believe it. Um, we've had, no one bid out for our milk this year so far. We're going back out to bid, we're out right now. The collaborative is out to bid right now for the second time, and we'll be opening the bids actually here in Chelmsford next Wednesday. Hopefully, we will have, otherwise, we would consider going to state bid or going out on our own to bid for our milk. Grocery, again, the same thing. Um, no one, we have not awarded that to anyone yet. Bread will again be awarded to Fantini, has been awarded to Fantini, and our fresh pizza is again at Gil's. So our accomplishments for the 24, 25, um, for our department, we increased, as you see, the meals served, over 65% participation for school, for lunch at each school. We serve approximately now 3,000 lunches per day. We reevaluated and collaborated with principals to introduce a new breakfast distribution model to the students at each site this year, and we see an increase in a much smoother, parents seem to be happier too, that they're not ordering online any longer. Um, we've continued to introduce new menu items with scratch cooking recipes, and that's really been, a lot of that's been done at the high school. So, um, you know, it's good and bad. We sometimes have great participation, the kids love it, and otherwise, sometimes they come back, but that's, that's the nature of the beast. If we see that they're not, you know, we tried a couple of times. If we see it's not accepted, then we don't menu it again. Um, the prepared meals daily with the state of the art equipment at the high school, still, we use some of that, the commissary, and we deliver it to the elementarys and some of the middle schools. We opened the new Chelmsford High School kitchen. That's Chelmsford's third newly renovated state of the art kitchen, and now we're serving lines at three schools, the new serving lines. We implemented three of the elementary schools. We painted the McCarthy cafeteria with pop art designs, and you'll see some pictures on the following pages if you haven't seen it in person. It's very different than the other schools we've already done, so it's very collegiate looking. And Jeff and I collaborated with the painter, and it was a lot of fun, and it really came out, I feel, really nice. This year, we hired new employees, working closely with human resources and our recruitment efforts at the regional job fairs. We actually increased about 25 from the job fairs. So we recruit about 25. We continued the partnership with Valley Collaborative to have three to five individuals assist at the team in the high school commissary several days per week. That's really been working out well. All staff received in-house training on the PD days from John Stalker, two culinary coaching and knife skill, and equipment skills, plus sanitation training. We attended the annual nutrition conference that was held in Boston in July of 2024. We maintained the nutritional menu planning and production record software that was implemented in 2024, worked in collaboration with the wellness committee, and we increased our catering for events with the Chelmsford School community. And actually, this week, we're still getting calls to do a lot more for the next two weeks, so. And we completed successfully, I, I hope we can say, our administrative review for Desi with favorable outcomes. So that was a great achievement. Um, so these are some pictures of what's going on. That's the new grab and go line that we have up at the high school. Um, that's one of our employees, that's actually Peggy Gumm's daughter on the right side, Casey. She's been working with us now for about four years, and she's our salad maker. She does a terrific job, and she's actually does a lot of our deli sandwiches. Um, we're using some of the equipment on the bottom there. Um, and you can see the new service lines that we have at the high school. Uh, this is the painting, um, some of the painting that we did at McCarthy, and our lion is all over the place. And it's beautiful. It really came out nice. So if you haven't seen it yet, you should drop eyes.
I want to say I'm, I'm the liaison to McCarthy's PTO, and I heard lots of praise for the new design. People talking about other kids.
Well, thank you. Really.
Really excited about it.
Yeah, it's really, it was a lot of fun. Jeff is easy to work with. Um, these are some, um, we had some themed days, like, we had a Red Sox day. Um, we had, we really celebrated this year, the week, Nutrition Week in March, Breakfast Week. So, um, this is just some students we went and visited and had some fun with. And as you can see, that one's over at Parker. And these are some of the new things, like, that's a shaker salad up in the left-hand side over there, and our tacos, and, um, a lot of new, we ate through the alphabet, we tried some new things. And so we, we've introduced asparagus and Brussels sprouts, roasted Brussels sprouts. And up in the right-hand corner is, um, we did a nice taco bar for the center school for the teachers. Um, we had everything on that taco bar. They seemed to really enjoy that. And so the, um, future for our program, we hope, is to purchase some new equipment at the elementary schools. We have a couple of more, um, elementary schools that need some more ovens, and, um, and we're looking at some other equipment over there, because we have Harrington and Byham are very, very large kitchens that we could really put some equipment in there and make it nice. Um, we're gonna enhance more cafeterias with updated painting and storefront murals, so stay tuned. Byham will be done, um, in a couple of weeks, on the weekend. Um, and it's gonna be, it's kind of cute for elementary. It's a cute kind of thing. Um, we'd like to really, we tried last year, we'd like to invite the school committee and administration to lunch. We will also continue to be serving the breakfast and lunch at all the schools, and we're hoping to increase our breakfast participation and come up with some, still more ideas for the, for the students to get through the lines faster. Um, and we're using the high school again as commissary and hopefully doing more of that, because we bought actually even a, we have a machine that, um, will seal and make the, like, actually our own management company in a way, some of the things we can seal and send off to other schools. So we'll be working with that machine next year a lot more. Um, we have to hire some more staff, um, to keep in line with the student participation. We're gonna be updating the traditional information using the software program adopted in 2024, and we're gonna be adding a few things to that, um, and let the parents have an easier way of seeing what's going on with their students. Provide professional development train, team building for the school nutrition staff, purchase farm-to-school products and grass-fed meats. So, um, stay tuned for that. Hopefully, this will go well this year. And, um, I would like to continue more menu development to highlight more scratch cooking and the recipes, because that's where the whole country is headed for. Um, that's about all. That is,
Anybody have any questions?
It's a lot.
Yeah.
I just, on all the progress, I was really pleased to see the breakfast numbers going up, and I imagine some of that sort of innovation, innovation around how breakfast is being offered and served to kids, I think, has made a difference. That was something I was looking at this year.
Right. And you had mentioned last about taking some of the sugar, which, um, you'll see the guidelines have changed quite a bit. And so, um, next year, you'll see a lot of changes on the breakfast menu because of the sugar content. And that's why we're having some problems with milk too, because they want us to lower the sugar in the milk. So, that's coming from USDA's guidelines.
My grandson goes to Harrington, so today he had his Parker School walkthrough, and his only comment to me, I pick him up at school, was how lunch is gonna be so much better at Parker. He's very excited with what he said.
I hope so. I hope he likes it.
Any other, sorry, Maria?
I always appreciate, um, how much involvement you have with the wellness committee, and so it's really, really appreciated. And I think that, um, the participation has really increased in the number of meals. And when you look at pricing, it, it's under $5 a day if it was gonna be, uh, breakfast and lunch. But still, for some, that's a very tough, um, road to travel.
Uh huh.
So hopefully, um, we keep up with what's been going on. Yep.
Yeah. All right, well, thank, oh, sorry, John.
Oh, just to say thank you. My kids love the food. Super easy. I am down for the lunch. I warned everybody, though, that I'm not gonna get anything healthy. I'm probably just going straight for the pizza. Same thing as, like, when I was in school. Just letting you know.
Not a salad guy?
No, I was definitely not the salad guy.
Nancy, thank you very much. You and your staff do a very nice job.
Yes, a terrific staff. We really, we're building up a great team. We really are. So it's great, and I appreciate them very much.
And we also heard comments when we went to the council of schools.
We did.
The PTO reported, uh, back about the taco bar, right, and how well-received that was.
Oh, great.
So just to let you know, it was reported out to all the PTOs, which was really great.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Great. Thanks, Nancy. Have a good night.
You too.
All right. Continuing on with the agenda, item four this evening is a vote to approve a contract with a vendor to, um, perform the construction, the construction of the secure entryways at the five schools this summer. So I'll ask Joanna, if she can, to just review the, um, review the bid process and the recommendation for this contract.
Thank you. So this is just a little summary of, um, the bidding process. And this is for, as the superintendent said, the five secure, um, school entryways for Byham Center, Harrington, South Row, and Parker. We advertised May 14th and three spots. Um, all, this is all, you know, under the guidelines of, of the state. We received nine requests for the bid. We had a walkthrough on May 21st, and then we just had one very small addendum that comes out of questions from the walkthrough, and then a couple changes to the drawings with the, the way the doors are gonna swing. And then we received two bids by the deadline, and, um, the low bidder was Marino Construction. And right now, our, we've asked our legal department to help us draft the contract. So, uh, this last suggested motion is to, um, enter into a contract with Marino Construction for $269,750. And this is just the construction, uh, you know, the walls, that kind of thing. The doors are being purchased separately through state contract. So this is just the construction of the vestibules themselves.
And this was funded through capital, correct?
Town capital.
Town capital.
And what was it, do we remember the total amount we?
It was between 800 and 900,000.
Okay. So, so there's plenty of money.
There's plenty of money. This actually came in kind of where we were thinking.
Okay.
Um, there's three major components to this. There's the physical construction. As Joanna mentioned, we actually buy, like, the doors themselves, and they're installed by a, um, the door company that we use who's on state contracts, so that's another portion. And then the third piece is the integration of all the security stuff that Bill does. So we also have a different state contract vendor on that does all the security products. So, um, this was kind of an unknown piece. We obviously knew what the security stuff was gonna cost, and the, um, obviously, there's a little bit of play with the door installation, but not too, too much because of state contract. This was kind of a wildcard number. Um, so this came in at a good number for us. So I see this happening all, um, probably slightly under budget. Um, we just need to really push this. The timing is more the issue.
Yeah, we trying to get this done this summer?
This summer. Yeah.
But the idea was, it's all similar to the high school in McCarthy. When school is open for the day, entry will only be into the security.
Correct. Correct.
I think that's so important.
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question quickly? Um, I know that when we went through the process last year of getting this capital work approved, there was also a project at the high school that was sort of in the same package around, it was more about egress, I think?
It was an egress door.
Is that not packaged with this?
Correct. That's separate. Um, so that funding was approved. Um, but this new company that we're working with to prepare all the specs and everything, they only have so much bandwidth. So the big thing to get out the gate first was to do the, um, the five entry doors, because we have to do that during the summer when there's no one around. The egress door could technically, uh, because it's not gonna impact the main flow of the traffic, that could be done during the fall. So, um, another project that they're gonna then switch to is, we actually have a very small project over at South Row that they're gonna help us with in the kitchen, and they're gonna do the high school project. So they already have the contract for the design and all the work that needs to be done, but we wanted to get this one out the gate first.
Any other questions on this?
On McCarthy, when that entry was redone, it went past the summer. Do you think this year?
In, I mean, I would like to think this is all gonna be in place and open for day one. Um, there's always a chance things, because McCarthy probably did take us until mid-September before everything was, like, in place, and then we had a couple of weeks of training on it. Um, it, it really just, it's the three different vendors having to work together to get this done. I do think it'll be physically built out. I think it'll be more the integration piece, but I'm so hopeful that we'll, uh, be open for the start of the school year. I can give you updates as we go along. Um, these kind of containment areas are being built separate from the regular entryways to the schools.
Okay.
So the main doors to the schools are not impacted by this at all. So, um, like, this school year in September could open as if it's, like, right now, uh, if it had to for a couple of weeks. These are building, being built to the side. Um, so they're gonna be a little bit different than we, um, than we had at the other two schools. I can show you, like, a drawing later to walk you through it, but, um, these would not impact the regular doorways coming and going to the school.
That's great. I think it has made a huge difference.
It's been very nice to kind of just control and limit the, um, the individuals coming and going from the buildings.
I'm trying to wrap my head around what that would look like at South Row and a different entry.
Well, not at South Row. Um, sorry. So South Row is still gonna have the main door, right? That's not gonna change. Right inside South Row, there's actually, um, like, a separate fire door that's gonna come out. And then, um, on the left, there is the, um, the window near the office door right now. That wall's actually gonna come out, and there's a new wall going in with just the, uh, secure entrance window to transact. And basically, there's gonna be a wall going across the, um, um, the hallway that you'd have to get approved to go into. That's an interior door that's gonna be in. I have no concerns about that one being done. The issue's gonna be the exterior door, what they call, like, the storefront door. South Row's isn't changing. So South Row's storefront door is not changing. So that one's fine.
Yeah, I was thinking, like, I can imagine with most of the schools that it would, you could go in a different door if you had to go around, but that one's-
Yes. Center, Center and South Row are only gonna have the interior work done. I have no concern about those being open on time. It's Harrington, Parker, and Byham. Um, their doors are a little bit, a little bit different.
They've got much wider areas.
Well, yes, we have to actually alter the entryways to those buildings, so that's what's gonna take a little bit more, more time.
Got it.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
Motion. Um, I move to accept the base bid and award the contract for construction services for work at five of the Chelmsford Public Schools, including, uh, new secure entry vestibules and with existing storefronts to be modified or replaced, and new vestibules as indicated in the contract documents to the following vendor, Marino Construction Inc. There are 24 Marshall Street Lower Mail, So-1851 for the four elementary schools, and Parker Middle School in the amount of $269,750.
Second.
Very nice. All right. Any other questions? Okay. Susan?
Aye.
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye zero. What's that? Good? Okay. Yeah. All right. So our next item is just recognition of LGBTQ and Pride Month. Um, so if Susan's up for it, she was gonna read the proclamation, and then we'll, of course, right when you-
Um, Chelmsford Public Schools proclamation. I'm lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, plus LGBTQ plus for Pride Month, June 2025. Whereas the Chelmsford Public Schools is a welcoming learning community, and whereas the Chelmsford Public Schools recognizes the importance of equality and freedom, and whereas the nation was founded upon and is guided by a sense of principles that includes that every person has been created equal, that each has rights to their life, liberty, and pursue happiness, and that each shall be accorded the full recognition and protection of law. And whereas the Chelmsford Public Schools, gay, lesbian, um, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, plus community are a vital part of all fields and professions and could contribute to a stronger community, and whereas the Chelmsford Public Schools is dedicated to fostering acceptance of all of its members and preventing the discrimination and bullying based on sexual orientation and gender identity, and whereas the Chelmsford Public Schools is strengthened by and thrives upon the rich diversity of ethnic, cultural, racial, gender, and sexual identities of its residents, all of which contribute to the vibrant character of our system. And whereas the Centers for Disease Control recognizes that LGBTQ plus teens are at a higher risk to be the victims of violence and have increased suicide rates, and whereas it is imperative that young people in the district, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, feel- regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers, educators, and school leaders. Now therefore, we, the Chelmsford School Committee, on behalf of the Chelmsford Public Schools, hereby proclaim and recognize June 2025 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, plus, LGBTQ plus, Pride Month in the Chelmsford Public Schools, and urge all members to recognize the contributions made by members of the LGBTQ plus community and to actively promote the principles of equality and liberty.
Thank you very much. That was great. All right, so we'll take a motion.
All right. I move that we vote to proclaim and recognize June 2025 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ plus Pride Month in the Chelmsford Public Schools.
Second.
Okay.
Diana, got that one.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, zero.
Great. Well, you're, I'll pass a little proclamation around. You can sign and we'll get that copied and posted up on site. Next, we're just going to ask Dr. Hirsch to provide just a little update on some of the work that's been happening statewide with regard to the high school graduation requirement. And she has a little slideshow for you.
So I think maybe Dennis may have had a crystal ball because at the last meeting, he asked if there was any updates around it. And then suddenly, it came out within a week later. So you must have some psychic ability. So we're just going to take a little trip down memory lane back in November. I gave a presentation based on the ballot question that was put on for the election about MCAS, which ended up passing, which prohibited the use of MCAS scores for competency determination for high schools graduating, for high school students graduating, including the class of 2025, which is this year's graduating class. At that point, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education changed their regulations to uphold this ballot winning. And we were then, had to take the time to look at what we were going to do for our graduating seniors, which I brought to this board that you voted on at that meeting. So a couple of things, though, to keep in mind is a competency determination is different from a graduation requirement in Massachusetts. I did see a lot of chatter when the board came out with their new regulations around MCAS based on Governor Haley's graduation group committee that he, that she has, that people were thinking, well, is this all they have to take in high school? And I'm like, no. Our high school graduation requirements are very different from a CD requirement. The competency determination requirement is to meet those competencies up to grade 10 for the standards that the students know in ELA, math, and science. Our graduation requirements are a little bit more robust than that. We have four years. We follow the common core standards of, math core standards of graduations. So that's four years of English. That is four years of mathematics. That's three years of science, including a, a lab science. It also has the three years of social studies. And that includes your arts, your practical arts, your PE requirements, and all of that. So students are taking more than just two years of English, and that's it. They have to take four years of English. So the previous CD requirement was attached to our MCAS scores in ELA, math, and science. And as we talked about for the class of 2025, we looked at our actual coursework for those students to meet that CD requirement up to grade 10. So at this point, what everybody has done is we've looked at the competency determination and what we're supposed to be doing for those students. And we were only, again, focused on the class of 2025. We are still administering MCAS. MCAS didn't go away. I think a lot of people thought that it just disappeared. It didn't go away. We still administer it in grades three through eight, as well as our high school students. It's attached to a lot of different things. It's attached to our federal funding. It's attached to our accountability system. It's also attached to a lot of scholarships for high school students. And it's also part of, the ELA one is part of the SEAL by literacy qualification. So it has a lot of merit in those pieces, as well as it gives us another data point to look at compared to our internal benchmarks that we use, such as IREDDI. We hear a lot from Kelly today talking about, you know, the, the benchmark assessment systems, our DIBL scores. So it's another piece of information for us to look at for students. We also use it for placement for specific coursework. Math is one of them. It is one of the, one of the options that teachers look at in conjunction with everything else to decide what placement students should be in. So we are still making sure that we administer MCAS, which you just heard about. It's happening tomorrow at the high school. Very exciting, very exciting stuff. So the Governor Haley had put together, in response to this, she had put together a graduation council that was made up of teachers, administrators across the Commonwealth. And the group has got together and has really focused on the class of 2026 and the class of 2027, which will be the focus of tonight. We're not going to go past the class of 2027 until this council meets again and then gives us additional information. So they ended up coming up with a CD requirement that was basically similar to what we've just done for the class of 2025. So they are saying two years of ELA, one, one year each of algebra and geometry, or the integrated math, one and two. And either one year biology, chemistry, physics, or tech engineering will meet the CD requirement for students. They have to have a passing grade and do well in those courses in order to meet the CD requirement. Then they would continue to take their coursework when they got into their junior and senior year for the four years of the English math, three of science, three of social studies. And I can tell you, our students take four years of science and four years of social studies as well. So it doesn't really preclude us to say it's only going to be three years. Very few students take three years of those two other topics. So this is actually mirrors what we've been doing for the class of 2025, which I thought was going to happen for the class of 2026 as well. What we did was we dug into it a little bit deeper. So when this was all coming down, because a lot of districts were doing multiple things, very different things. We looked at, we went back to the COVID protocols. I don't know if you remember this from November, when I brought it up in that slideshow. We went back to the COVID protocols when we couldn't administer MCAS. And we looked at the actual courses that DESI put out, like the actual course numbers that they assigned to it in our data base. So we looked at those classes, and we're sticking with those classes because it meets this requirement as well. So for the class of 2026, we will be looking at those two years of ELA, the ones we'd already determined for the class of 2025. Same for the mathematics and same for the science for the class of 2026 and 2027. The difference will be is once this class of 2027, which is your sophomores right now, they, part, part of their competency determination, in addition to the ELA, math, and science, will be one year of US history coursework, which again, luckily for Chelmsford, it is part of our coursework for our freshman students. So they will be taking this course. But we will make sure that that is in alignment with what the state is looking for. And part of that ballot question included expanding it to require other content coverage rather than just ELA, math, and science. So this will bring it, the social studies will bring in that fourth element for us as a district. So what this ended up doing was standardizing the graduation requirement across the Commonwealth. Because again, when it first came out that the ballot passed in November, districts, I can tell you right now, districts are doing many different things for their competency determination for this current graduating class. There were some districts that wanted to keep MCAS in place. I wouldn't recommend that, but however, that's what they decided to do for their districts. They came up with their own test for students rather than looking at coursework. So what this is going to do now is standardize it for everybody. People like, because we were a little concerned about like, well, what is this going to look like if a student transfers in from another district and they're not meeting what we have? And it just, it got very, very messy. But it's great that now they're at least looking at what we in Chelmsford were looking at, which we thought was the right route to go. And we're going to, it's going to align everybody together. It does bring you to the standards that meet the 10th grade MCAS measures, which is our, our framework that we use. And then it lays down those foundations for our future graduation expectations for students. So there shouldn't be any questions. And the council is still going to meet and look at the broader review of everything that's out there, see how these two classes continue on and how that's working, and make any changes and recommendations that we will probably address in future classes. So tonight, we're all going to be looking at 26 and 27. We'll worry about 28 and beyond after this council has a chance to review what has happened for these other classes that have gone through. And then what does this mean for us? We just have to ensure that our offerings and graduation policies align, which is part of the work we'll be doing this summer. We have to make sure that we identify that that history course is meeting that requirement. And if a student isn't doing well in that course, what will be their other options? And how do we incorporate that US history one if they didn't meet it in their first year at high school? We'll have to monitor what other recommendations are coming from the graduation council, from the governor. We'll have to communicate this with families. So for the class of 2025, when you made that vote and we made the change, Principal Murray and I put together a correspondence which he sent out because they know who he is. They may not know who I am. And he sent that out to the parents to communicate with them. And also, not only with our families, but we've talked to our counselors, our teachers, because everybody has to be on board with this, especially our counselors, because they're the ones that look at students to see if they are meeting their graduation requirements in general, whether it was MCAS or now the new coursework. They make sure that those students have hit all of those markers, freshman, sophomore, junior, and senior year. And then one of the, a little bit of a heavier lift for us, not necessarily in your policies, because I looked at your policies already, but we're going to have to make all the changes to the current handbooks, especially the high school one. And there's, there's only, luckily, people use the broader term as competency determination in your school committee policies. There's only two policies that use the word MCAS in it that we would have to actually make a change. So it's not going to be a heavy lift for your policy changes, but we should tighten that up before the beginning of the school year. Questions about graduation requirements?
I have a question about what Chelmsford is doing. I think we're in great shape to continue this going forward. We have a pretty rigorous requirement.
They only just said, listen to us. It would have been fine.
Of course, the states were willing to just go with DESI's CD requirement, and that's all they're going to require their kids to have?
No, I, so.
They have to have, at least what's in the frameworks, right?
Right, so they'd have to have what's in the frameworks. So the CD requirements are just for that, for that grad. So we just want to know their basic competencies. So up to grade 10 is a basic competency. Because if you remember, school is compulsory for students, grade six to 16. So 16-year-olds are sophomores. If you can go to school up, we will recommend it. We'd like you to stay with us till the end. But if you have made it to grade, finished out your sophomore year, you have basic competencies. That's what the competency determination is, right? That's the basics. But then, there's graduation requirements on top of that. Districts do have different graduation requirements. I can tell you, when their transcripts come in, not everybody follows the math core. They have different ways of doing things. We find that the math core is the way to go, and it works very well for our students. Plus, they can take additional classes. So districts, where it got a little unwieldy is when the districts didn't just look at their coursework up to grade 10, and they went with like, again, their own test that they created or other courses that weren't grade 10 classes. And I'm like, well, you're asking them to do above and beyond what a competency determination is. So people just thought, they, they've gone rogue, but it's not their fault. They, nobody was there really telling anybody what to do, and the class was graduating this year. So I, for us, we have that competency piece for those core classes. But then, in addition to, there will be four years of English. I can't imagine a high school doesn't have four years of English.
I can't imagine a high school saying, well, I guess we don't really have to do that.
Well, some high schools don't necessarily have, like, we have the English 9, 10, 11, 12. They're very, you know, robust courses. Some people will take their journalism class, which is a semester class, is their English requirement. I wouldn't recommend that. It's a semester class. It doesn't hit all the standards. It has to be something that will hit those standards. So, you know, again, we can only control what we're doing here. We have a, a very, very strong program of studies at Chelmsford High School. K through 12, pre-K through 12.
It's just interesting to me that different districts may still have something very uneven, even with this.
Yep.
And what would this graduation council be looking at? Like you said, further recommend it? What would you, what would they possibly change?
I mean, I mean, the MCAS is still there, right? So if we start, because we still have the accountability system, right? We're going to find out if we're meeting, partially meeting, you know, not meeting. We're never in that category. We don't go past the partially meeting. So I'm assuming when they start to see if some of those tests start to dip, they're going to probably be looking at like, well, what courses did everyone pick? So for example, they're just saying two years of English. They didn't say which two years of English. It's ninth and 10th grade for Chelmsford. Right? Because that's, like, it has to meet the standards. And it's not going to just be two years of English of like two semester-based classes that equal a year. It's going to be your full year course that we're going to be looking at. So I'm assuming they're going to, they've already asked for some feedback so far because they just put this out last week. And I'm assuming they're going to be looking at how districts are doing with this to get, gather that information, get back together to make sure that we haven't lowered our expectations just because the MCAS isn't the CD requirement. Because that's exactly what could happen. Kids don't receive the coursework that they're supposed to have, or the coursework itself is lowered, right? The expectations are lowered, and that's what you don't want. Because that's where MCAS came into play, is that they were finding that the expectations were going down. And when you tested the students, they didn't have basic competency. So then, MCAS came into play. People are looking at their actual standards, what they're supposed to be teaching kids, not what they just feel like teaching kids. And they have to meet those standards. And we started to see that trajectory up. So, I mean, I wasn't a proponent of the MCAS going away as a competency determination because students should have a basic competency before they walk out of high school, of skills.
All right, any other questions? So we have two different motions, I see here, right?
You do. I felt like it should be two different motions because we were talking about the class of 2026 that has one set of requirements and then an additional requirement for the class of 2027.
Okay.
Okay. So I move that we approve the adoption of the updated competency determination language for the Chelmsford High School class of 2026, which includes two years of ELA, one year each of Algebra I and Geometry, or Integrated Math 1 and 2, and one year of Biology, Chemistry, Physics, or Tech slash Engineering in accordance with the new law.
Second. Okay, just wanted to make sure you don't want that. Second.
All right, any further questions on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, zero.
Okay. I also move that we approve the adoption of the updated competency determination language for the Chelmsford High School class of 2027, which includes the addition of one year of US history coursework that aligns with new law requiring broader content coverage.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, zero.
Thank you. We'll get going. I'm making those changes in our documents, and I'll pull those policies for you to look at.
Yeah, if you let me know.
Thank you. Next item this evening is just kind of a reminder that we do have a special town meeting in a couple of weeks. It's on Monday, June 23rd at 7:30. And two of the articles actually pertain to the schools. So the first one is, we're at a good point under the accelerated repair program with the MSBA for the roof repair, roof replacement, I'm sorry, at South Row Elementary School. So we have the designer that we've been working with. Their cost estimator has costed out the project. Basically, the costs have gone into the MSBA, and they put together a project funding agreement to talk about the total project cost, how much the MSBA is going to contribute, which is a little over 52% of the, 52.26% of the cost. What the town needs to do is now go and actually vote the total dollar amount of the project we had had, and kind of an earmarked figure in the budget. The final budget is going to be higher, but the state is paying for half of it. So the bottom line is, we do need to go and vote to approve the funding amount that's in the project funding agreement. So that's going to happen that particular night. That's the, kind of the bigger vote. The second vote is, we have three different elevators under the capital planning over the last two years that are at the point where the town did hire a designer to design the elevators, again, put cost estimates together just based on some of the cost trends that they're seeing on other projects. They need a little more money to finalize those. So the thought process is to secure the funding at this town meeting, this special town meeting, because we have it anyway, that will allow the designer to put the bid specs together and actually bid this work for late summer, early fall, because you do need almost nine to 10 months lead time to secure elevator parts. So these projects would then be completed during the summer of '26. But they need a lead time to get them going. So in talking with, with town manager Owen, he thinks these will be, you know, successfully passed. It's, town meeting's been very supportive. You know, we need a roof at the schools. We need elevators. These aren't, you know, luxury items. There, it's work that has to be completed. So I believe town meeting will view this favorably. Again, where half of the funding for the South Row roof is being picked up by the state, too. It's a nice, it's a nice thing. But I'll be there that evening, but just wanted to put it on there just to, to remind folks that we do have a special town meeting that night. Those are the only two articles that pertain to schools. Those are the only two articles that pertain to schools and they are the first two on the agenda. So, this should be a one, one-night town meeting.
Any questions on it? Thank you.
Thank you. And then just a last one for you, just in some dialogue we were having. I realize this is tomorrow, but the senior prom this year is booked in New Hampshire. It's not technically a field trip. It's not really a travel, but just to be safe, we wanted to kind of get it on the agenda for you to, to see and kind of bless. But the senior prom is tomorrow evening. It's at the Doubletree in Manchester, New Hampshire. So, we just look for your acknowledgement and support of that travel. It's out of state. It's not overnight, but it's out of state.
So, this means that free motion not.
There'll be no problem.
No problem.
It's more than eighteen.
Oh, they were really popular. That's popularity, okay. I move that we approve the Chelmsford High School Senior Prom on Wednesday, June 4th, 2025, with the Doubletree Bielton in Manchester, New Hampshire.
Second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, prom is on.
And have fun.
Prom is on. I know, I know.
I'm going to text the high school principal.
You're staying out of the center tomorrow afternoon.
Yes.
And that concludes.
Oh, look, I like it.
Oh, it's always fun. It's just very difficult to travel.
Not fun if your street is right there.
Oh, that's right, you are right there, yeah.
Oh, you can just walk down the street.
I know.
Or you could go look at everybody.
All right. Anyone have any liaison assignments?
I don't have any this week.
I have one. Do you want me to go first? I'm ready if you want.
Go ahead.
I went to Chelmsford Friends and Music. They're a busy, busy group. Wow, they've got a new slate of officers. Their president is Ginger Scoob. Their vice president is Laura Wilkinson. The secretary is Suzanne Witt. Treasurer is Courtney Cooper. They've got bottles and cans going strong. They're back doing that regularly. They just had a talent show, a showboat, middle school talent show on May 10th. It was a great success. It wasn't really one as a fundraiser. Its purpose is to build community so that fifth and sixth grades can kind of see what's going on with seventh and eighth grade kids and they can see what's going on with high school, because high school kids serve as mentors to help it all go on. And they were all thrilled with it and plan to do it again. One thing that was a little disappointing is CFAM does have scholarships to award. They were able to award seven camp scholarships to kids who'll go to things such as UMass Lowell Band Camp or UNH Orchestra Camp, but they only had one student apply for their college scholarship. So, they awarded it to the one student. But it's just disappointing that other kids who want to pursue careers having to do with music didn't apply for it. They thought they'd advertised it well, but just need to spread the word for next year that that's something that's available. And they had a great presentation from Kristi Whittlesley about all the things they're doing. They're doing a lot of music things. The group is alive and well.
Yeah, you got some.
I went to the Central Elementary School PTO meeting. They were very kind, allowed me to go at the beginning because I have another meeting to go to, but they're absolutely, I think all year long, they've just been committed to do, running so many things, so many events, and the kids truly benefited. Like everybody else, volunteers are always a big thing and they need those volunteers. But one of the things that was truly successful, they talked a lot about it, was the recycle day and the concern that, you know, they, they need to be well-staffed for future ones. So, but they, they really did quite well this year. The Council of Schools I also attended, but Dr. Lang and Dr. Hirsch were also present. The council was very successful in their scholarship. They had quite a few folks that, students who applied. They awarded two scholarships, $1,000 each, and now helped me here. I think Tom Peterson was one of the essays.
Yeah. One of the students wrote about Tom Peterson and the other was about.
Ava. Ava was the student, but I don't remember, which is terrible.
Lauren, it's Lauren.
There you go. Thank you, the full name. Sorry about this, Lauren. And it was absolutely amazing to listen to the essays and how committed, you know, the difference people made, the teachers made in the lives of the students. And so, lovely to watch that. I think the council also made a huge difference this year and especially in the programs they ran for this, for our system. And finally, I'd like to say that Susan and I attended a wonderful signing day. That was so much fun. And there were 13 students, right, for the teacher pathway. And I'd like to thank Dr. Hirsch because she came up with a really nice little thing and created a.
Oh, they're little.
Linear.
They were so happy about their linens. Who knew?
They loved it. As a future teacher, they got to wear their linear for the day and they looked absolutely thrilled. I was also very, very happy to see the diversity in the group in, in the sense that, you know, it included three male students. Hey, that's wonderful going into teaching as their career pathway. And just thinking of all the students that everyone will impact in the future and the difference they'll make in the lives of so many people. And the other thing I noticed was three of the students are potentially specialists.
Yes.
Music, art, technology, which is another great thing.
They're well encouraged to consider Chelmsford when it's time to start doing their internships and student teaching, so.
We'll see you in four years.
Welcome back.
Yes, it was really great.
Anybody else? Anyone have any new items? I just had, I guess not an item, a question. I saw advertising online, the papers, an elementary, like, independent elementary school trying to.
Oh, yeah.
What is, what, can.
I saw that.
Can somebody do that? Can they just start their own elementary school? Drake School?
Oh, yes. I was totally missing what you're saying yesterday.
So, last fall, Dr. Lang and I were approached by, well, actually, it was two individuals who are the board members for, it's Drake Academy of Excellence, and they were looking to open up a, starting with an elementary level, starting in grade one school that they were built upon till grade eight. They were at the beginning stages, so this was back in November. They were at the beginning stages. They do have like, they left us with a binder of some of their stuff and they were working on trying to find an actual place where they could possibly hold the school and work on their occupancy pieces. So, part of the school committee's responsibility for any private school that wants to open up that has school age students ages six to 16, they must approve the school ahead of time. And so, they were working on this process and they were going to get back to us with some more information, like location, and they have to go through a whole process. I actually have that. I printed it out just in case this question came up tonight. And the first part of it is like the physical safety of the, of the building itself, which the fire department is aware of. However, they haven't done final approval, approval as well as, they don't have building permits at this point. So, they really shouldn't be going through the process of accepting applications because this board has not had a chance to have a full packet from them of meeting these five pages of requirements for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And for you to review it, you also have to do a site visit and approve the school. So, Dr. Lang did reach out to one of those board members and we're just awaiting to find out where they're at. I know that they've been in contact with the town, the building inspector, and I just think that they're not there yet, but they have put out advertising. So, we're going to have to just put them on notice that they have to finish the process before they can even attempt to open. They can take applications, I guess, but I don't know how they're going to do it. So, right now, their, their goal is to have first grade with 20 students. And then next year, and I don't know if this approval process is year after year, because then they would want to open up second grade with 20 students. And it's my understanding, third grade, fourth grade, all the way up, they're charging a tuition. I saw around that advertisement, I think it's like $12,500 per student. But there's a lot of components that go into opening up a school, like, including, not beyond the curriculum piece, like their teacher qualifications, how they're going to manage student records, nursing and healthcare, physical plants itself, food and nutrition, just everything that we do here that you listen to all year long, those elements have to be put in place and they have to have the evidence behind it for you to approve a school.
Is DESI involved with this too? I mean.
So, what happens is it's up to the local school board to approve, yes or no? And then you have to fill out a, a new school form with DESI to alert DESI that the school is looking to open. So, DESI's not even aware that the school is.
There's still a lot of more pieces to go before this is.
Yes, looking at what they have to do, and I am happy to share this document with you of everything that they're supposed to prove prior to your, you know, final approval and then what your liability is. So, there's the law pieces in here, like, you have limited liability of like, you know, things that happen at that school. So, you know, I wouldn't worry about that. We actually spoke with our attorney, a little bit, well, your attorney, a little bit about it as well, but they, I just believe that they have a lot more to do before they can even contemplate having students starting in the fall.
Okay.
Is that true as well?
No, I don't think so. I think it's just, you know, they, they have, you know, a philosophy. It's almost, it kind of reminds me a little bit of like our charter schools. So, like, was it the Murdoch School when they first opened in Chelmsford?